Welcome to our meeting and ask that you stand to join us in the pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Duranty's absent, excused. Folks?
Present.
Rappaport?
Present.
Richards?
Present.
Sharp?
Present.
Stachow?
Present.
And we are welcoming Ms. Thompson.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Before we start, we'd like to, we have a new member to our planning commission, Commissioner Thompson, sitting down there in the purple dress. Is that purple?
Yes, it's purple.
So many varieties of colors, so we'd like to welcome her to our commission. Approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, second by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to approve the March 1st, 2023 meeting minutes. Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
Minutes are approved?
At this time, if there's anything you would like to bring before the commission that's not on the agenda, this would be the time. There are, I believe, copies of the agenda in the lobby there. I see none. We will move into our first case, which is case 2256, proposed special land use approval for childcare center 2146 South Wayne Road. Mr. Ayew.
Chairman, can I ask you to please put this at the bottom of your agenda? The applicant does not look like he has made it yet. He did confirm that he was going to be here.
Motion to change orders of the day.
For.
Motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards to change. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move into case two, which is 1701E, proposed land division, 6555 North Newburgh. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. The subject property here is located at the southwest corner of Newburgh and Warren Road. This actually is going to sit just outside of the Lowe's parking lot. The property, right now, the Lowe's parcel comprises of about 23 acres and is zone CB3, general commercial business district, and currently developed by a Lowe's home improvement retail warehouse. The petitioner is requesting a land division. The land that they are wanting to divide is identified in red on your screen, approximately a red rectangle. I know this was in your backup as well. This is going to create an outlot that will allow the petitioner to develop a take five oil change shop. The proposed parcel does comply with zoning requirements of the CB3 zoning district and also the CB4 zoning district, which is important. In a second, I'll tell you why. The parcel as configured is approximately 26,000 square feet with access proposed via some access easement agreements that will be granted from Lowe's to take five oil, and they'll run with the land. The administration and planning department are recommending approval of this case. Just some quick additions to it. Their, this is what the elevation model or proposed building will look like. It's on your screen. Site plan approval will come at a different time, potentially in May, well, maybe not in May, but maybe in June, before you and before the planning commission, if this request is approved and if the rezoning request, that is the next item on your agenda, is approved. So just a little taste of what the building could potentially look like. On this land division case specifically, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ayew. We have a couple of screens that are not on.
I don't know if I know how to turn those off, and they are.
It's coming on.
Okay. You have to turn it on at the top.
I did that.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you. Sorry for the delay. Petitioner, would you like to come up and introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Philip Sarandos. I'm with JM Civil Engineering. I work with Kyle Fleming and Bob Noy, which you previously had contact with. And I was recently brought on with the company at the beginning of January as a project manager. I work in the Phoenix office, so I'm taking over a lot of these oil change projects and helping to process a lot of these zoning applications.
Okay. This is a two-part thing, but we'll bring you back up. So we're going to open up to the commission. This is for the land division only? Is there a motion?
I will take one motion at a time, please.
Yes, there's separate. Yeah, this is a separate division. Are you ready to make a motion? Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion, case number 170F, proposed land division.
No, it'd be E, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
E.
1701E.
Correct.
Proposed land division, 6555 North, on Newburgh Road. And this is, this is the, the administration and the planning department recommend that this petition be forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval, contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there support?
Before I support, could the petitioner please make it clear? She said that the administration was recommending approval. Is she recommending approval?
Are you making the motion to approve?
Yes.
So long as the, as the recommendation for, to send it along with approval is coming from this board, then absolutely yes, I do support.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Stachow, supported by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote? I think my mic is off. Chairman, can you turn my mic? Okay, thanks. Roll call, vote to approve case, to recommend approval of case number 2256. Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Before I vote, can we please clarify that we're voting on case number 1701E? Administration?
I'm sorry. 1701E, recommending.
Please restart the roll call vote.
Yep. Roll call vote, recommending approval of case number 1701E. Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Motion passes. We will move into the second part of this, which is case 1701E, F, I'm sorry, F, proposed rezoning from CB3, general commercial business to District CB4 Vehicle Service. Mr. Ayew.
Thanks. That guy being late really screwed us up. All right. As you know, the subject property here is still located at the southwest corner of Newburgh and Warren Roads. Similar, it's about 23 acres, zone CB3. There's a Lowe's Home Improvement retail store. This is the same exact case we were just referring to. The property, as I mentioned, is zone CB3. That's our general commercial business district. And this case is requesting a rezoning from CB3 to CB4, which is our vehicle service district. And that is, again, to accommodate the take five oil change. Right now, our CB4 vehicle service district is the only district that allows for auto-oriented uses such as the oil change. So property to the north is zone CB1. That's Anna's house, the restaurant that you all are probably familiar with. Property to the south is our one single family. It's vacant land. Property to the east is zone CB1 and CB3, the location of Meyer, Culver's Drive-Thru Restaurant, and Harvest Bible Church. And then properties to the west, which are not shown on your screen, are in that industrial subdivision tucked back there, zoned I1, and developed, again, by industrial uses. The future land use designation of this property is shop and dine district. That's approximately the entire area surrounding the mall, including this area right here. This property is located in a commercial shopping district, close to multifamily and single-family residents. As you know, some of you may know, the CB4 district is proposed to be eliminated. I think you might know that as well, in the new zoning ordinance. Therefore, what we're doing is categorizing some of the vehicle uses, including minor vehicle repair uses in the CB3 district as special land uses. And so the subject property in question would technically be suitable in the new zoning ordinance for an oil change shop because it is zone CB3, subject to special land use review. Let's see here. There has been no, this is, these are questions that I have to answer as part of my rezoning staff report. There has been interest in auto-oriented uses, specifically gas stations and car washes in this area. Someone was interested in turning Aubrey's Restaurant into a car wash and turning Anna's House into a gas station with a drive-thru restaurant. We obviously declined at an administrative level. There has been no recent changes in zoning in the immediate area. Another question I have to answer to you as part of my staff report. And then I just wanted to kind of read this out of the master plan. This is the definition or summary of what this land use designation as shop and dine is. This classification intends to further define and enhance the existing district. The primary uses should be commercial with a focus on retail services and entertainment. The desire is to make this area a regional destination. Auto-oriented uses, this is my language, auto-oriented uses are not preferred in the shop and dine district. However, the city's administration has been working with the developer for, I don't know, maybe eight months now, six to eight months, to design a building constructed using high-quality building materials. And we feel, the administration feels that we have accomplished that with the site plan that will be moving forward at a later month. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. I think there'll be a lot more discussion at the city council level as it pertains to the auto-oriented nature, so including that in my staff report. Other than that, similar to the land division case, we are, the administration is recommending approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Anything you wish to add?
Yes. So the concern with automotive, he pointed out this is a minor automotive. Typical automotive, people will see cars parked around, tires, parts stacked up, a lot of noise. This entails none of that. It's a drive-through oil change. People don't even get out of their car. They drive through in and out. They don't use pneumatic tools. They don't store anything on the site except for, you know, what's inside the building. And they keep it very clean, very quiet. The only noise you're going to hear is the sound of basically a doorbell, like, you know, like the gas station doorbell when they drive over the hoes when they come in. No pneumatic tools.
All right, very good.
And they don't, they don't do any major auto repairs, only oil change, fluid changes, wiper blades.
All right, very good. This is a public hearing. Anyone on my right wish to speak on this? Anyone on my left? We will open it up to the commission. Commissioner Rappaport?
I have a few concerns.
Yes.
I'd like to address. So I guess, before I, before I address you, sir. Number one, I took a look at the, at the proposal. I have no problem with the proposal. It looks very, very nice. General questions, mostly, mostly concerns to raise to your attention. But to the administration, I was present and participatory in the, in the zoning, reimagining undertaking that we took over the last year, and I just wanted to make sure, to put it on the record. In the event that our, our new zoning were in place, would this even be before us as a, as a discussion?
They wouldn't have to rezone the property, which is technically a bit more cumbersome than a special land use, but they would have to go through the special land use process.
Okay, so this, this would not be coming before us as a rezoning, which we're always a little guarded. This would come before us as a, as a permitted special use.
Correct.
In the, in the zone that, that this would actually be.
Correct. And it's a little weird because the CB4 is going away, so we're rezoning this property for maybe a few months, and then it's going to revert back to CB3 because that's what all the CB4 districts are going to become, but.
We always love to technically do our job.
Yep.
So to the, to petitioner, tell me, tell me a story about waste oil and how, how it's handled at these sort of businesses.
The waste oil will be picked up. It's basically stored in large containers within the building. It'll be picked up by a truck, no larger than the garbage truck, and hauled off-site probably once or twice a week, disposed of it per EPA standards.
And because we've got a firefighter in our midst, I'm going to ask the question, does it, does carrying the, the waste oil on, on premises increase fire hazards in any way, shape, or form?
I don't believe so. Everything is stored in sealed containers. It's very careful. There's no dirty rags lingering around. They keep it very clean.
Oily rags?
Yeah.
That's a problem.
We don't like oily rags.
The, and everything that's, that's done on the site, it's heavily regulated by the Environmental Protection Agency.
Oh, yes.
I, I, I'm an attorney. I ask questions I know the answer to. What, are you aware of if they have a procedure or a, or a plan in place for accidental spillage?
Yes, they do.
That concludes my, my, my questioning, and I am prepared to go with the motion.
Are there any other questions? Yes.
To the petitioner, I'm glad to hear you explained that there wouldn't be a lot of noise, traffic, and all that kind of nonsense on that corner, since there's a restaurant there and a church and all of that. That was my main concern, so thank you for explaining that. And there won't be any type of cars lined up to get in.
No, at the most, there may be one or two, you know, sitting behind the bay. I've driven by a lot of them. I've never seen any more than that.
Okay, thank you.
So you're not going to have cars pouring out into the street, which I've seen in other, you know, drive-thru restaurants.
That was my concern. Thank you.
And they take, they take that very carefully into consideration when they're designing this, to make sure that there's enough room for that to keep everything on-site and to keep, you know, to keep everyone safe and to not make it look like a big cluster when people are driving by.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Commissioner Rappaport?
I'm, I do apologize, Mr. Chairperson. I did have one additional concern I wanted to raise.
Very good, sir.
And this could be open to the, to the administration. I would be, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that we have, in the past, denied through the process automotive uses, specifically gas stations, to Kroger. And this being a, this being a vehicle usage in the, in the area, I anticipate the representatives or those who, who were advocating for Kroger's gas station might be quite upset, and they, they probably will show up and have some words. I do see this as a, as a different sort of a, a different sort of a use. It is not a gas station. It is an automotive use, which is loosely associated with a, a gas station, but it is not in direct competition with any of the existing stations that we already have and in the area. I tend to agree with the, with the prevailing, with the prevailing wisdom that we do have too many. So I just wanted to make sure that that was brought up before I make my motion. Nobody's caught blindsided.
Yeah, just in regards to that, the reason for the gas station that was quoted here on the commission is because of the familiarity with gas stations half a mile away one direction and a half mile away the other direction. So this not being a gas station, it would fall under different categories. That was oversaturation, and it was crossed from City Hall on the main road into the city.
I thoroughly agree. I just anticipate the, the issue.
Very good.
With, with that having been said, regarding case number 1701F, proposed rezoning from CB3 to CB4, for all that it matters, I'd like to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and recommend that this get sent along to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Rappaport, supported by Commissioner Richards. Roll call, please.
Okay. Roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number 1701F. Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stachow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Good luck as you go to city council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move into our next case, which is case 2070A, site plan approval for Carley Court Single Family Residential Subdivision. Mr. Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. The subject site here is located east of Schuman, between Cherry Hill and Palmer. The site is made up of 18 buildable lots and are all zoned R5, single-family residential. A land division request was approved in 2002 by the city council to create these existing lots. They're on your screen in yellow. The petitioner is requesting site plan approval to construct 17 single-family homes on 17 of the lots. One of the existing lots is, is going to be used for stormwater detention. Properties to the north, south, east, and west are all zoned R5, single-family residential, identical designation, and are all developed with single-family dwellings. Similarly, the master plan also designates these parcels or the site as a single-family residential. Some site data and description of the proposal. The site contains an existing road that will be inspected, if it hasn't been already, and become a city road. There's also some underground infrastructure we talked about that has already been tested or videoed and seems like it's in working condition. The development will contain concrete sidewalks. We discussed that already. That's in compliance with engineering standards and street trees as required for any residential development. The petitioner proposes to construct a variety of, of homes. I think there's three homes that are in your packet, and I think those are kind of the variety of homes that will be offered to customers that want to purchase a home in this neighborhood. And you have the floor plan and the elevation drawings, and I'll share those up on the screen in a moment. All homes will be required to comply with the minimum setback and bulk requirements of the R5 district. The homes range from two-story, one-story, and all the way three-bedroom, 2.5 bath, one-car, two-car. I would say the average is about 1450 for square feet. Let's see here. Homes will be constructed with a partial, partial brick exterior on only the front side. The zoning ordinance requires brick on all four sides up to the top of the first floor. Therefore, the developer is asking for a waiver of this requirement from the city council. And that's, that's pretty much all I have. There was a question raised that the developer should probably entertain. And we were talking about the exterior materials, and brick is sometimes used to prevent fires, or at least the spread of fires. And it was mentioned that vinyl or siding in general might be, I don't know, complimentary to fire spreading, so I imagine you were going to use some sort of modern standard for, for the particle board or the interior detail, whatever. So if you could speak on to that. I don't, I don't have the technical expertise to discuss that. Some of the floor plans that were provided, Ashton model, that will look like that. The Auburn model with the two-car garage that will look like this. And the tad more model. That is the one-story ranch. That's a facing, obviously, the cul-de-sac from Schuman. And that is all I have. Be happy to answer any questions. The developers are here as well.
Thank you. Petitioners, like to come forward and introduce yourself.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name's Aaron Schaefer with Schaefer Development. We're a real estate development company out of Farmington Hills, Michigan. I'm joined alongside my father, Steve Schaefer. My father actually has some experience in building in the city of Westland. We worked with Polty Homes on the residential development off of Joy Road. First and foremost, want to wish everybody a Hag Samach, happy Passover. I'm actually getting ready to go do our Passover Seder once we're wrapped up here tonight, but wanted to start off with that. So first and foremost, thank you very much, Mr. Ayew, for the presentation. It is actually going to be 16 residential lots due to the location of the stormwater basin. Lot 15 is the basin, but it appears the basin sits on both 14 and 15. So rather than do any reworking to the basin, we're going to drop it down to 16 lots. We are under contract with a national home builder for the property. Again, they will be building one-story ranch or two-story homes. We'd be looking to pull all 16 building permits at once so that we can get that all completed. Again, these homes will be constructed and then sold. They are not spec homes. So as soon as we get these done, we'll be getting ready to sell the homes. Little history on the property. It was approved back in September 2002. All municipal and franchise utilities besides DTE Power is on-site. We're currently working with DTE right now to get transformers, just because there is a little bit of lead time on that. So we're working as early as possible to ensure that they can get that in their inventory. We recently worked with the Department of Public Works. They got their little robot out and TV'd the line to ensure that there were no issues because, again, these utilities were put in in the early 2000s. Per the video, no issues. DPW has no concerns. Everything is in very good shape. We also tested the water main along the property. No issues there. Regarding brick, we'd be looking to do partial brick on the front facade. And at the end of the day, the goal of this development is to keep it as attainable and affordable as possible. All of you know, with, with the onset of COVID and with, in light of recent interest rate hikes, it's very, very difficult to even afford a home at this day and age, especially for people my age who are, you know, 20-somethings, out of college, and are just trying to scrape by. So, you know, that's something that's very important to me, as well as us as a company, is if we're going to build, build, build homes here, we want to make sure that we're not pricing people out of the market. Regarding the fire comment that Mr. Ayew brought up, we'll make sure to work hand-in-hand with the building department and fire department that we're meeting or exceeding the code expectations outlined in the city's ordinance, and we'll make sure that everything we do is in compliance to reduce any type of risk of fire as much as possible. That is pretty much everything I have. To keep it on a high-level note, if there are any more specific questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything you have. So with that, I will turn the floor over to you commissioners.
All right. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, we thank you for addressing the fire safety feature of that, and we'll open it up to the commission. Commissioner Stachow.
Yes. Hi, good evening. Well, I'm very pleased to hear that you're finally going to be getting started back on this. We got 2002. Wow. But I do hope that all goes well for you because you do have to go to the council next. The designs look really well, good variety. Pleased to hear that you're taking into consideration the pricing of the homes as well because that's been one thing I know that the administration has been striving to have for Westland in regards to welcoming people into our city, is to be able to have affordable homes. Also, to the, the fact, the decision that you made in regards to the reduction of that detention pond and the extension, eliminating. and the extension, eliminating that one property, I, I think was a very good decision. I had looked at that and I was questioning administration as well in regards to what your plans would be in, you know, to that. So I think that's really a wise decision. Everyone would probably be happy about that as well, especially the person who would have been living next to that pond.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So thank you so much for considering Westland and continuing on with that, and I wish you good luck.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any other questions or comments?
I do.
Yes. Commissioner Fokes.
I am also happy to see that we're bringing in new development of new homes in this area. And also, my question was, is it, you don't do basements anymore in homes, or is that something? Or was a reason why you didn't put basement in these homes?
These homes will feature basements, but it all depends on ultimately.
The, the cost of the home.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they can be put in with or without.
Okay. I know you're trying to keep it affordable. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just one other thing before I open up for anything else. We did have communication with one of the citizens in the area, Mr. Clark, in regards to wildlife, and just so that he can, when he watches this. Wildlife has the ability to move and to come and to go in their own manner. They've showed up in areas that we've never thought of and they leave areas we never thought of. So we have no, no forms about that these wildlife that he's addressing here are going to do the same. They're going to move on their own. They're not going to want to bunk in somebody's property or something. So just wanted to know that we did receive that from Mr. Clark and.
Absolutely.
We're all aware of that.
I did receive that from, from, from planning staff.
Very good. Any other questions? Commissioner Rappaport.
Well, just expanding a little bit, certainly, it's, it's good that you've, that you've heard the concern. There's, there's obviously a, going to be a habitual tendency for, for wildlife to show up in the area, and it's good that you're aware of it and you can make the, the informed decision, even if you could do something about it if you wanted to. My, my only real concern, and it's, it's mostly, it's mostly a curiosity. So speaking about the, the current housing market and the difficulties facing your, your industry, you said that your, that your company, obviously family-owned, I very much appreciate it. I, I recognize your father from a couple of sessions that he's been.
Hopefully good, not bad.
He's always been very respectful and he does good work, as far as I can tell. I guess my question is, is who are your preferred purchasers? Do you, do you, as a company, prefer to, to line up purchasers that are actual families? Or do you have no, no particular preference when it comes to, to investment properties? For example, an investment firm coming in, buying multiple properties as rentals?
So sort of taking a step back, really the two most active buyer pools we've seen, because we do a lot of work with national builders across, you know, the tri-county area and other markets besides just, you know, the state of Michigan. But really, the most active buyers or the people really looking for homes is that 55-plus empty nester demographic. So individuals, you know, kids have, kids have, kids have left the nest and they're looking to downsize but age in place in the community and don't necessarily want the burdens of a two-story house or, you know, a, a large yard and so on and so forth. So that's what the ranch product appeals to. And then the two-story house appeals to either a first-time home buyer or a younger family with children. So at the end of the day, we're not discriminating against who can purchase the home regardless of the age, but those tend to be the two buyer segments that we were trying to target with, with this community. That younger individual who's looking for a home, maybe just had a baby and wants, you know, something that isn't too large of a home so that, you know, maybe 10 years, 15 years from now when they're ready to move up or have more children, they can move into a larger home. And then, of course, that, that elder demographic that's been in the community and just wants to stay in age in place in the community they call home. So at the end of the day, we're looking to ta, you know, get as much of the buyer pool as possible, but those are really the two demographics we'd like to aim to attract with this community.
Well, I definitely appreciate that answer. And just as a statement, I'm, I'm very satisfied, very gratified that, that, that you've taken on a leadership role in this company. Certainly, you're going to be much more, much more aware of the financial burdens on generations, your generation and generations younger, that honestly, the, the older generation did not have in, in securing their future with a, with a property purchase. I very much appreciate you. With that, I'll pass the floor over for anybody who has a motion or continuing questions.
Motion's in order. Yes, Commissioner Ruby.
I move to sing case number 2070A, site plan approval for Carley Court Single Family Residential Subdivision between Cherry Hill and Palmer on the east side of Schuman to City Hall with a recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Ruby, supported by Commissioner Rappaport. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Roll call vote to, to recommend approval of case number 2070A. Fokes?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Stackhouse?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
The motion is approved?
Gentlemen, thank you. Sir, I think you've, I think you've brought your son along fine. I think he's going to be an asset.
He's actually a twin.
Is he?
The two of them, they divided kind of groups.
Oh, wow. Well, I think that he's going to be a big asset and continue your, your company forward.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a nice evening.
Now go find that Afikomen.
Will do. I'll try my best. I got to save it for the younger siblings, you know?
Good luck at City Hall.
Thank you.
Or at Commissioner. Mr. Au, how do you choose to deal with our very first case with them not here?
In the past, only one time has this happened during my four years here, and you had me discuss the case and there were no issues with it, so we moved it to City Council. If you want me to present it, and if you want to do that, fine. If there are issues, we can table it to the next meeting. I suppose it's up to the commission.
If I may, to the administration, are there any requirements that they, that the petitioner be present to, to prosecute their, their petition?
They're, they're required to be at the city council meeting, but they're not required to be here, so.
Very well.
And the, some of the thing, if we move forward with this, then we'll have to bring it into the minutes. One of the things, the, cleaning up the property, maintenance of landscaping and, because it is kind of overgrown in area. Needs to be trimmed and it is addressed. So we'll make, one, if we do this, we'll want to make that part of the records.
Yeah. We are having a meeting next month, too, so.
I'm going to table it.
We can. People in agreement to a table? Somebody make that motion?
Would, would my esteemed colleague Fox like to formalize that into a motion that I could then support?
I move that we table case number 2256, propose special land use approval for a child care center for our next meeting with the, because of the fact that the petitioner's not here.
I support with gusto.
Okay. Commissioner Fokes made the motion to postpone case 2256 until our upcoming meeting. That was supported by Commissioner Rappaport. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. We suggest that we hang on to this portion of the material for everybody.
Yes, please. Just hang out to it. We won't mail out a new packet.
That way he won't. Mr. Au, any, any more information from you you wish to share?
I am asking, as part of your agenda, to modify the July 2023 meeting. I don't think we need to modify it tonight, but definitely at the May meeting. I'm going to be out of town that first week for the Fourth of July. So in case we do have any items.
You, are you recommending or asking to move that to the following Wednesday?
If that is, is that, if that is convenient for you all, if you want to take some time and look at schedules, we could do that next May or in, in the coming May. I will be back on the sixth, which is that Thursday after the Wednesday that we usually meet, so we could do it on the sixth, too. It's just, I'll let you guys kind of noodle on it for a month if you want.
Yeah, we can, we can address that next meeting. Everybody can look at their calendars and.
Requirements of the Open Meetings Act, how soon would you need a decision from this board?
Well, we can even hold off until the June meeting, but let's just, if, if you guys don't mind, maybe, maybe May will give us sufficient time to plan everything.
Well, I, Mr. Chairperson, I can't speak for every member of the, for every member of the board, obviously, but as long as we have that much forewarning, I personally don't have a problem meeting on basically any Wednesday, so.
Okay. So if you would like to bring that motion back at our next meeting?
Okay.
Fantastic.
Cool.
Any other comments? Motion is in order to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Stackhouse, supported by Commissioner Richards. All in favor, say aye.
Before we do vote on that, I would like to take a moment of privilege to wish everybody a happy Passover.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.